Thank you all for being with us this evening. If you have a cellphone with you, please turn it off or put it on mute. And let's begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This will be the last meeting of the Buncombe County Commission for 2019. We are entering a time that is considered holy for many people of faith in our community. So before we begin our meeting this evening, I'd like to ask for a moment for silent prayer or reflection on what this special time of year and traditions mean for you and for your family and for all of us together as a community. So please join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much.
Chairman, short point of personal privilege.
Yes, sir.
Yeah? So I just want to take this opportunity to wish the people that I serve with as we go into that season, for me personally, I want to take an opportunity to wish each of you a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I just appreciate the opportunity to serve with you and the ability to be able to do this. And I thank y'all for what you do and I pray blessings upon your family during this special time, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that very much. All right, we have a couple of announcements. I'd like to announce that we have parking validation for any folks who are attending the meeting this evening who used the county's parking deck or used Asheville Transit to attend the meeting. You can get your parking validated by one of the officers who is with us this evening. You can see them on your way out and get your parking or transit validated. Let me read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the code of ethics adopted by the board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, and to faithfully perform the duties of the office, to conduct the affairs of the office of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any contract coming before the board today? Seeing none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the board at this meeting this evening. Do any members of the board have any questions about any items on the consent agenda?
I do have one. Just a minute, just a... I would like for this... Sorry.
On the consent agenda, it talks about the Hall Fletcher project. Maybe somebody could give just a minute on what that is, and we don't have to vote on it. Because when we vote on... Do we have to... If I pull it out, do we have to vote on it?
If you'd just like some information, we can have discussion and then vote on it in the consent agenda packet.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I just... I would like for the public to know that we're a little bit more about that.
Certainly. So what it is, is it's two projects. One project is to replace the roofs at the Hall Fletcher School, and the other is to upgrade two bathrooms to ADA requirements. So those are the two projects. So we would like to award that contract to PC Construction.
Well, those are good projects. I just want to make sure that people knew as much as they could about it. Thank you for doing that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mason. All right. Are there any members of the public who have any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Yes, sir?
I would like to... I think this is the time that you tell me. I would like to request that before the East Asheville Library Project is voted on, that citizens have a brief opportunity to speak.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Oh, and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, before we vote, I do want to make sure everyone's aware, we will have a brief closed session. The first item we have under new business is a legal update from Ron Payne, and we will have a brief closed session immediately prior to the public discussion of the legal update. Okay? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, all in favor... I mean, to approve the consent agenda and the remainder of the agenda, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great. And we don't have any public hearings. Do we have any items under the county manager's report?
No, sir.
Very good. All right. So I'd like to invite all of the commissioners to join me up at the podium. We've got... We're going to be honoring a person who has served Buncombe County for 47 years this evening, Jerry Vihon, who was with us. So I'd invite Mr. Vihon to join us up at the podium and all the members of the commissioners as well.
So commissioners, as you're doing that...
Yeah, but I'm sorry, but before we do that... But before we do that, Ms. Pender...
We do have a short video that we wanted to show, and I want to express thank you to Trinity Baptist for developing this video. So Max, if you would show the video, thank you.
Turn it up.
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna be in it. Cut a sound.
Well, no, they're all.
We hope.
Great. Did all the fire district crews come up? And any other present first responders? Guest phone as well.
I'd say just in between.
Hey, Cory.
No. All those that went back. All right. That's my treat.
Make sure they can see your face.
Uh-oh. I get a third row.
Yes, I can be in.
Yeah, I'm not.
I think you gotta get closer, guys.
Some of the guys in the back.
Double up.
Maybe if you come around.
Double up, double up, double up.
You want.
There we go, perfect. There you go. That'll work.
Three, two, one. Send Tom's light.
That good. Give you a good shot, show all the ball.
Three, two, one. And got it, perfect.
What do you?
Just process.
Yeah, just use my.
I don't know, maybe the batteries did. Like the light kind of went off on.
Yeah.
I'll have to read and announce these cases when we go into the closed session.
All right, commissioners, we do have a need for a brief, I think this will be a very brief closed session. Ms. Hockaday, could you talk about the purpose of the closed session?
I, yes, Mr. Chairman, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318, 111A3, the Board will enter into a closed session to consult with an attorney retained by the Board on the matters of Buncombe County versus Joseph L. Wiseman Jr. et al., 18 CVS 4206, and Buncombe County versus Ellen M. Frost and Wanda Skellington Green, Buncombe County Superior Court File Number 19 CVS 5208.
Thank you. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're in closed session. Is Ron in the room yet?
No.
Okay, he's going the round, the long way, okay. Okay, give him a second. All right, is there a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we're back in open session. All right, I'd like to invite Ron Payne to come forward to provide a legal update to the Board.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I'd like to update you on a couple of legal matters that are ongoing. First, to advise the Board that the lawsuit against former county manager Wanda Green and former Commissioner Ellen Frost has been instituted right before Thanksgiving in Superior Court seeking to recover the monies that were expended in connection with the World Equestrian Center. The second thing is that in conjunction with the, what I would call the Joe Wiseman matter, the deposition of John Creighton was taken some time before Mr. Creighton left federal prison. And during the course of that deposition, it became apparent through his sworn testimony that a former Commissioner had received things of value from Mr. Wiseman or Mr. Wiseman's employer. And after that, and after consultation with the Chair, I consulted with the attorney representing that Commissioner's family. The Commissioner is Bill Stanley. The family met at my request, discussed the matter, and I received from, on the letterhead of the attorney, Jean Ellison, a letter signed by Ms. Stanley dated October 14, 2019. And I will read that letter so that the Board can take such appropriate action as it may deem proper. This, this letter is written by and on behalf of William H. Stanley, former Buncombe County Commissioner. Although William H. Stanley is unable to admit or deny allegations made against him concerning his tenure on the Board of Commissioners as POA for William Stanley and his wife, after consultation with the family, we make the following statement. The family of William H. Stanley respects the work and investigation of Commissioner Stanley and others for past acts. Any decision by the Board in reference to the removal of William H. Stanley's name from the county health center is accepted and respected by the family who understand that it is in the best interest of Buncombe County. Signed, Jane Stanley, attorney in fact, for William H. Stanley. We are still trying to get records from Mr. Wiseman's employer during the years preceding 2014. That is when Mr. Wiseman formed his company EIC. We were in court yesterday seeking a court order to compel CDM Smith to produce those records. Once we get those records, we will then be in, I will then be in a position to schedule the deposition of Mr. Wiseman to further investigate what may have transpired during the time that he worked for CDM Smith in conjunction with any Commissioners or employees past or present. Also, as you know, that at your request, I have met with and interviewed every Commissioner, current or past, with the exception of four, to try to determine whether or not anyone had dealings with Mr. Wiseman or knowingly accepted anything of any value from him. And I'm pleased to report for those that did agree to meet and be interviewed that no one knew of him. And it appears that if anyone did receive anything from him, it was unknowingly because it was where, there was a process where there were meals in, in conjunction with national Commissioners' meetings, where Ms. Green and/or Mr. Creighton would call Mr. Wiseman, have him phone in his number, credit card number, to pay for meals when Ms. Green was afraid that it would be so much that the public would get upset.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Payne. Just, I want to just ask one, Mr. Payne? Okay, could I just ask one, just one, one question, just to
Sure.
Kind of clarify the statement you just made. So the allegation that was made against former Commissioner Bill Stanley during the deposition of John Creighton was that he improperly accepted things of value from Joe Wiseman.
Yes, sir, and that would have been during the period that Commissioner Stanley was on the Commission, which would have been during the time that Mr. Wiseman was employed at CDM Smith, which is one of the reasons we want to get the records because we have learned, albeit anecdotally, that Mr. Wiseman would pay for things and then was being reimbursed by his employer.
All right, thank you. Do any Commissioners have any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Payne, for the update. In light of the information that we have learned through this legal proceeding and the deposition, the sworn deposition that Mr. Payne just referenced and the follow-up work that he has done to engage the family of Mr. Former Commissioner Stanley around this, these allegations and the response that they've provided, I would like to make a motion to rename the William H. Stanley Center back to its original name, which is 35 Woodfin, 35 Woodfin Street.
I second.
Is there any further discussion on the motion?
This is a, this is a hard day, but this needs to be done. We've gone, this crew has gone through a lot. It's like I told earlier, Jerry V. Hans been through six County Commissioners. We've been through four, or no County Commissioners, but Managers, County Managers, I apologize. We've been through four and then still going through it. So I, I am for this resolution to remove his name from the building. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I realize that this is all sort of new information that's being made publicly available this evening, but if there are any members of the public who have any comments, we would be happy to take it. But I realize this is all sort of new information for folks who have not been briefed on it previously. All right, if there's no further discussion, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, it's adopted. All right. The next item on our agenda is the ADA Voting System Replacement Express Vote. And Joyce Canavale is our interim Board of, Canavale, I'm sorry if I mispronounced it the first time. Our interim Board of Elections Director will present this item. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. On August 23, 2019, the North Carolina State Board of Elections approved the certification of new voting equipment from three equipment vendors. To qualify for certification, voting equipment must first have been tested and approved by the Election Assistance Commission in Washington, DC, and follow the procedures of the Election Systems Certification Program adopted by the North Carolina State Board. Once the State Board certified the new equipment, the County Board of Elections voted to pursue the replacement of our 2006 ADA equipment from the AutoMark ballot marking device to the Express Vote ballot marking device. Our five-member Board of Elections attended vendor demonstrations in Wake and Haywood Counties. They voted to proceed with the required test during the November 7 municipal election. This equipment was tested in all 12 precincts. Having completed its canvas of the election, the County Board determined that the recommended system meets the requirements for voting in the county. The budget request of $400,000 for new ADA equipment has been held in the Capital Funds, Capital Projects Fund since 2015. An updated bid of $372,100 has been obtained from ESNS. The North Carolina State Board approved our request for replacement of county voting system last week, and we are asking you to approve the use of the funds that have been appropriated for this project. We thank you and plan for implementation in 2020. Any questions?
I don't see any. Is there a motion? All right, there's a motion in the second. Are there any members, I would like to, I'd like to suggest we offer, we take public comment on this. You know, elections are
Yeah.
fundamental to what we do, so I don't know if anyone will have any comments on this or not, but are there three Commissioners who'd, yeah, okay, I see that there is. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on the motion? Mr. Pelley?
Right here?
Yes, sir. And you'll have three minutes to speak, and there'll be a green light.
And it's really more a question than anything.
That's fine, yeah.
I know at the state level, there are some concerns about the vendors chosen for, for voting machines. And just, will this system provide us the paper ballot follow-up? And along with the electronic, that's my question.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, this, this does have a paper component to it that will then be, after it's been utilized by touchscreen or with headphones or a, a keypad, then the ballot will be put into the voting DS 200.
All right, thank you. All right, there's a motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you so much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the RadTip Connector Donation and Interlocal Agreement. And Josh O'Connor is here to talk to us about this item. Thanks, Josh.
Just wait for the presentation to kick off. All right, so the RadTip Connector is a segment of Greenway. Give me just a second. I'm glad somebody's here to help. All right. So, the RadTip Connector is a mile of Greenway that goes from Broadway to Hill Street. It is the, the missing piece of connection between our work with the Town of Woodfin and the city's work with the River Arts District Transportation Improvement Project. I've got a little bit more detail here of this project. We originally applied for grant funds for the project. It was our intent to design this as a connection for our Greenway system and pursue as a project. We undertook a feasibility study prior to pursuing this design grant, and in the process of pursuing that feasibility study, we understood that a on-road connection would be much more advantageous to our needs in constructing a large Greenway system. And in conversations with the city, they were more interested in an on-river facility that is a little bit more cost prohibitive. So, at that point, we decided to work with the City of Asheville to turn over our grant funding, allow them to administer that grant, and we are going to work with NC DOT under their cost sharing arrangements to pursue a sidewalk connection more immediately. So, what we're asking the board to do is we've already approved the twenty thousand dollars during the last budget cycle that we're asking go to the City of Asheville to help meet the match requirements. The other portion of the match is being provided by the City of Asheville and friends of Connect Buncombe. Each entity is giving twenty thousand dollars for a total of a sixty thousand dollar match, and that's going to allow them to receive two hundred and forty thousand dollars for the design of this Greenway. Under this arrangement, City of Asheville will be responsible for grant administration along with the design and engineering. We'll have a seat at the table, but not necessarily in an administrative role. We'll still retain the ability to pursue the missing mile with that sidewalk connection, and our intent is to pursue it with NC DOT with a forty percent cost of those materials, which is a pretty dramatic savings. We do have a clause built into the paperwork that you have before you today that will allow us to take back this money if the city doesn't move forward with the grant, or if within three years, they don't pursue the grant. So, your requested action is to approve the donation agreement between Buncombe County and the City of Asheville, provide them with that twenty thousand dollar match in order to make that connection.
All right. Thanks, Josh.
Can we take any questions?
How come we're, we're going through the city for the designs of this? I thought we was in Buncombe County.
The project itself is in the corporate limits of the City of Asheville. The reason that we have decided to turn the grant over to the, the City of Asheville is the initial cost of the Greenway and building it alongside the river where this, this grant is applicable.
Make just a little slower, John.
Okay. The, the cost of building the Greenway where this grant is applicable, after looking at it, was pretty cost prohibitive in terms of the amount of Greenway we're trying to build and how much this one section would cost. And looking at it, it'd be more advantageous for us to make that connection with a sidewalk paying only forty percent of the cost of materials. So, it allowed us to step away from constructing that portion of Greenway next to the river and allow the city to construct it at their cost instead.
All right. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Josh. All right. Next up is the East Asheville Library. And before we jump into it, I think this is, this is another one, I think we should take some public comment on it. I know there's folks here, Chris asked for that beginning, so are people comfortable with that? Great. We will do that. All right. We're back to talk about it again.
Good evening for the presentation that came up. So, as we mentioned at our previous meeting, we've received the final cost estimates for the, the new library, and we're going to present the details again and seek approval on funding to move forward. I'll discuss the costs in more detail momentarily, but first, we thought it'd be helpful to review the project timeline based on questions from our previous meeting. So, I'm sorry. The General Services Team worked on highlighting various stages of the development of the project in order to illustrate the cost increases that have taken place. And I'll just walk through the, the stages here. The project was initiated in July of two thousand and seventeen with a budget of four point five million. Then, over the course of the next year, there were public input sessions, and through the course of those, the residents expressed a desire for a larger community room and enhanced parking, and that resulted in the building location being moved. And in October, the cost estimate for the new, of October two thousand and eighteen, the cost estimate for the new design and new location came in at five point eight million. And then, in November of two thousand and eighteen, the board approved the increase for the budget of one point three million to reach that five point eight million budget. In April of two thousand and nineteen, we received the design documents, and the construction costs that came in were five million, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. That didn't include the lease requirements, which we later discussed as part of that agreement, furniture fixtures and equipment, and any other alternates from the drawings. Then, in August of two thousand and nineteen, we received the construction documents. Those were completed, and the cost estimates went up significantly, as you can see in the timeline, to five point nine million dollars, which again, didn't include the lease requirements, the furniture fixtures and equipment, and the alternates. So, that brings us up to November of two thousand and nineteen, where after the team did their value engineering effort, the cost was reduced to five million, seven hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And when you add in the obligations to date, the FFNE, the playground, crosswalk, basketball courts, which were part of the lease agreement, and the alternates, that brings us to the project total of six million, nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars. So, just in summary, kind of looking at an overview of the project costs, the design costs, you can see at the top, are four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. The construction bid came in at five point nine four four, four three one, we looked at previously on the slides. The value engineering removed two hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars, and I'll look at those in greater detail on another slide. Furniture fixtures and equipment at three hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then, the three requirements of the lease, which were the playground, the crosswalk, and the basketball courts, you can see the, the figures on those, seventy thousand for the playground. Half of that is going to be covered by a matching grant through Recreation Services. And then, eighty-five thousand, seven twenty-one for crosswalk, basketball court, sixty-two thousand, eight sixty-two. And then, the alternates, which we'll also look at in greater detail in another slide, at two hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars for the total project cost, again, of six million, nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars. So, taken in the context of our current project budget of five point eight million, that leaves an additional funding need of one million, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars. As we noted in the previous meeting, there were major variances that contributed to that increase around the construction cost, which included site development, finished carpentry and casework, glass and glazing, HVAC, demolition and abatement, and landscaping amongst others. Sorry. See if I can go back. There you go. So, looking closer at the value engineering items that we were talking about earlier. So, on these, we have the top six listed, and the intent of the values, excuse me, the value engineering process is to reduce the cost while not substantially altering the quality or functionality of the building. The General Services Team worked closely with the architects and engineers to provide alternatives that do not compromise the integrity of the project. So, again, these are the top six items, and in addition to the other items that were identified, the total savings is two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars and five, excuse me, two hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars. One thing I would add on this slide, too, and we talked about it last time, is the Japanese maple relocation, which came in very high. This item is, it's a, a tree there that's very important to the community, has a value to it that isn't necessarily reflected in the dollar sign, but one thing that I can share is that the General Services Team is willing to look at, trying to do the work in-house, or look at other alternatives that might be suggested, to try and do something to save the tree. But obviously, it's a very high cost, and that was the low, the low bid to move it. So, just wanted to make sure that you had an awareness of that. Looking closer at the alternate costs that we discussed last time, so these are items that were identified by the construction manager, which are not considered essential with respect to the functionality of the building. The items include the operable wall, wood trim, sunshade, courtyard, and trellis. And to look at these in a little bit more detail, we talked about doing that last time, and what they offer. The operable wall, this divides the community room into two smaller rooms for separate uses, which increases the functionality of the space. The wood trim, this was an item that came up in the community feedback sessions, they identified as important and desirable for the interior aesthetics. The feature softens the appearance of the interior and aligns with the look and feel of the other structures in the community. The sunshade is a feature that primarily improves the exterior appearance, but does provide minimal glare and heat reduction in their meeting room, or, excuse me, the reading room. But there are also shades inside as well, so it's, that's not its primary purpose, but it does provide some of the, that functionality. The courtyard, the community feedback indicated that this was also very important to offset the loss of the playground space. The courtyard also earns the project one point toward LEED certification, which is because it provides a community gathering space. And then, finally, the trellis, this provides limited shelter, so it's really not a functional piece, it's really primarily aesthetic and improves the appearance of the building. So, just to speak briefly about the project financing, which Jennifer will also talk about following this presentation. The project financing plan is to finance the entire project through tax exempt bonds with a twenty-year term. One point three million of the appropriated fund balance will be transferred back to the general fund, and the project is anticipated to be included in the February debt issue with other county and school capital projects. So, our requested action is that we move forward with the current project as designed and in accordance with the construction bids for an amount totaling six million, nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars, which is one million, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars more than the current budgeted amount, and also to approve the, the corresponding budget doc, excuse me, amendments. Our second requested action is to award the contract for the amount of five million, nine hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars, including alternates, and also with the value engineering dollar figure moved to James Arvenoy Construction Company. And we'll take your questions. Thank you.
And maybe helpful to leave that final slide up there, just so we have all the-
Sure.
...information.
Maybe.
All right.
You won't let me go back?
Actually, okay. All right. Thank you very much. Is there more in photocom?
Oh.
Or any, but any questions at this point?
Can you go back to the alternates?
Sure. Let's see if I can. You want the overview or the details?
That, that's fine.
Okay.
So, we had this discussion before on, on the alternates, and, you know, we're dealing with a pretty, you know, pretty substantial increase, which I understand. On those alternates, and, you know, hearing it a couple of times, it seems to me that the ones that you really, that, that really add value is the operable wall and the courtyard. The courtyard gives you the additional one point in LEED, and the operable wall, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming it's a, it's one of those big movable walls that-
Yes.
...gives flex space and they're-
Correct.
And they are very expensive. It seems to me that if, if, and I think that a couple of us had, had suggested that you come back and let us know if there's anything that, you know, that could be adjusted. And it seems like to me that it makes sense to keep those two, two things, and that we could probably shave the others because they're mainly aesthetic. I think that's the words that's, that's used in there. And I, I don't think it affects the, the beauty or the functionality of the building either, so I didn't know if y'all were, you know, gonna make or run that recommendation back to us, or, or, you know, if you wanted us to make that part of the discussion tonight, or?
We certainly, it certainly is appropriate to make it part of the discussion.
Yeah.
I, I think what I would say about the, the utility of the, the different alternates that we're considering, the, the partition wall, definitely functional, no question about it, I agree with that. The, what I would say about the partition wall is that can be, correct me if I'm wrong, but that can be added at a later time.
Yeah.
Some of the other features, not so much. And I, my, this is my personal belief about the, the building spaces, my, my philosophy is that our library buildings need to be inspiring. They, they need to be a place where people come and experience joy and delight and are inspired to learn and be a part of this space. And, you know, obviously, aesthetic tastes differ, but I would suggest that if we remove those elements, you really start creating a more utilitarian look to this building. It may not seem like a, very important to have a trellis or a sunshade, but I think they, and the wood trim, but they do soften the appearance of the building, I think in a way that's significant and worth consideration. The, I, I would agree with the, the comment that the courtyard is essential. I think if we lost the courtyard, that would be a, just a devastating loss, not just because of that lead point, because it really, I do think improves the, I think it's a functional item, too. It creates a gathering space for people to come and enjoy that building. So, I would, if, if there was one item on there that I would really suggest strongly that we don't lose, it's that courtyard. One of the things that's unique about this space that I think is fortunate is that not only do we have really an exciting building project, but also you have a, a park space, the basketball court, which I, may sound not essential, but I think it creates an overall experience, and it draws people to the space. And one of the things I believe very strongly in is that we have to magnetize our buildings. And you magnetize it in a number of different ways. Sometimes it's you magnetize it through features, like a, a park space or a basketball court, whatever it might be. But you also magnetize them through good design and inspiring design. And the, the building needs to communicate that to you from the street. It's not just once you enter the building, it's when you're, it's before entry, it's during entry, and it's after entry. You have to want to go back to that building over and over and over again, and you really have to pay attention to aesthetics because of that. Otherwise, we would just build a, you know, a gymnasium or something, you know, it's just stone block construction. But we, we do this because it is a, a source of community pride, and, and it's inspirational. It truly is. Obviously, I believe in it, I'm biased, I love libraries, but-
You, you sound just a little biased. Not a lot, just a little.
Sorry.
No problem.
Can you tell?
It's all right.
But I, I really do, I do feel strongly about it, but I do understand that there are practical considerations, and that's obviously something you have to weigh. But I would suggest that even though it does seem that it's largely aesthetic, that there are, it is important for it to be aesthetically inviting from, from the exterior and interior. We talked earlier today in our strategic planning session about how important education is in this community, and how it's a value and a priority for us. And this is just something I've seen over the years, working in, in this profession. I really believe that, that bringing in our youth, and all ages for that matter, to the library is, is supercritical. It's the other part that complements formal education. This is the part where people get excited about learning and excited about connecting with each other, and you want to create a space that honors that and celebrates that. And the more we whittle it down, the, the less potent that is. So, I just, just want to put that on your radar as we talk about this, and I'll stop.
So, so I would not expect you to respond to that, to my comments, any other way. Number one, I'm, I'm going to say that I, you know, I'm a, I'm a big supporter of this, I have from, from the beginning. At the same time, I don't think it's a negative if we're, if we're looking at some of these, and even though they may be considered small amounts, when we're, you know, I, I just know that, you know, thirty thousand here and thirty thousand there adds up, and that building is inspiring. If you didn't do any of that on the outside, I've been there, I remember what this looks like, the inside of it. You're talking about putting wood trim on the inside, is this the same library that has rock all over the inside of it? Yeah, that's it. And so, this is an amazing building. All we're, all we're- All we're, all we're talking about are there some things that, that, that we wouldn't have to do, because it, it does, it, it will allow us to be able to take that money and, and use it, you know, somewhere, somewhere else to be able to achieve some of the, you know, the goals that we talked about in strategic planning. So when I talk about those two things, understand that, and when I talk about looking at these, understand that's where that conversation's coming from. So.
Let me ask a question. If I remember right, the building is facing west, right?
Great question.
Am I right? Now, all I'm saying is, I'd hate to be in that library when the sun's shining.
Oh, yeah, right.
You need the sunshade.
Yeah.
I think that's a must. I mean, we want to make, look, the key is to make it user-friendly, so if you'd look at, you're talking about the courtyard, the operable wall and the sunshade, which I think you need, okay, that leaves the trellis and the wood trim. Right?
Yeah.
But why nickel and dime it to death? It's a $7 million building, let's do it right the first time, you know?
Hey, I'd like to, I'd like to ask that, that folks not, not cheer or boo any comments I've made by us or any other citizens this evening.
And, and I know we want to, you know, be cost-effective and look at it and save every dime, but, you know, I'm a firm believer in if you do it right the first time, it saves you down the road, you don't have to add to it at all. I can tell you, I did this for a living. I was over the facilities for 10 years in western North Carolina for First Union, and I know we made some of the mistakes that we're talking about doing here now, and it just costs us more later. But I think I'm willing to vote for it as it is.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna make another comment. One is, when we have discussions regarding anything associated with, I was, I was having a discussion with a constituent earlier, we was talking about the library, you know, and today's a good day. Today's a really good day for the East Asheville Library, for the citizens of the East Asheville, because we're getting ready to vote on this. And I think the, the, the unvote's gonna be very good news. However, it is not nickel and diming if we have conversations about cost. We can never get to that point and consider that. Now, having asked the question and heard your passionate plea, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the East Asheville Library as submitted this evening.
I second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. To move forward with the current project in an amount totaling $6.977,466, and approval of a contract in the amount of $5,944,369 to James Arvenoy Construction Company. All right, further discussion. I'll, I'll throw my two cents in as well. It's been a long time coming, it's great to see everyone here tonight, appreciate everyone's input on this, and it's gonna be a great project, it's really exciting to see that we've gotten, gotten it to here. You know, I think part, I think, I think, I think it certainly is legitimate to talk about the cost.
Oh, yeah.
This will be the, by far, the biggest investment in a single library the county's ever made. And I think part of the challenge on it is that, you know, it's, this whole project has come forward in a time that we've had transition in management, different folks have worked on it at different times. I think the process, for various reasons, you know, but including kind of the cost management and the budgeting, it would have been different if there'd been sort of, you know, the folks we have with us now had been able to be there from start to finish. So that's just, that just is what happened while this project was being planned. So I think we do, when we think about working on projects like this in the future, we do want to set a budget, and we want to try to work hard to stick with it, right? So I'm sure you all who are fans of this project want your government to do that, right? We don't just want to blow up the budgets on every project that we, we work on, but I'm, but I'm supportive of it as well. It's a great project, and I'm excited to see it moving forward.
I'm excited as well. I do think it has given us the opportunity to look at these type of projects as we go forward to ensure that we're having the right conversations about the items that are needed, the furnishings that are needed, and really digging in to make sure that all of those line items are included in the budget. And also factoring in contingencies when we move forward, because you never know with a construction project, what's, what's gonna come up when you start digging into it. So unfortunately, I think it's raised a lot of questions, but I think that's a positive so that we can move forward with our other projects and really be sure that we're asking the right questions. I've spent a good bit of my career in the world of education, specifically literacy, so I am overjoyed to ensure that this library is happening, and it's such a great place to start a young love of learning and love of reading that we can take throughout our entire adulthood. And Mr. Blanton, looking at some of the libraries that you have led prior to your arrival here, they are incredibly impressive, and I'm really excited that we're bringing a piece of that to Buncombe County and the leadership, and I completely appreciate your passion for this project. And it's, I was excited coming into this, I'm even more excited, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just time in briefly to also express a lot of enthusiasm about getting ready to cast a vote in favor of this, and, and a lot of gratitude to staff, and, and also especially to leaders in our community who've been such passionate and at times very dogged and persistent advocates, which is what's required to move the needle on a project like this, that will really make such a big difference and is one more, I think, exciting development in the eastern part of our county, where we're really seeing new opportunities for community, new opportunities for the kind of connections you describe. And I, my little five-year-old and I periodically do visit the current East Asheville Library. I usually have an asthma attack as we're leaving, so I'm really excited about the, being able to visit the new facility with, with our family, but, but also what this means for people from every walk of life, which is part of the beauty of what libraries do, is they create a space where we get to meet and be around all our neighbors and be around books, and that's pretty great. So thank you all, and I'm really excited about this.
All right, we did, we did say, we would take public comment, so if there are any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion, give you a chance to do so. Mr. Yelton.
Well, we can tell it's election time, because it's easy when you're spending other people's money. And you know something? I've asked a question a long, long time ago, and you, everyone, know what it is. Would it not make more sense and be easier to make a decision about where your investments go if you knew what each library cost you? I've not had a response on that since Wanda Green was here. Seems that that number is lost and not looked at. And it'd be very simple to do, because I got the labor, but I didn't have utilities, and I got the books that was checked out, but I couldn't find out what was electronically checked out, because it wasn't broken out, because that's a statewide contract. And I told Tim Flora, who's in the paper today, challenged some things that was said in the paper, he told me that it was a state contract, master contract, and you know what I told him? That's the contract that I wanted, because that's where the money was being made. So all I'm saying is, I'm not against libraries, folks, but you need to know what each one cost you, and how many books are checked out, and who's using it. Because I went through previous board that Mr. Stanley was on, and I watched that board build libraries in Fairview and in Lester, and now I want my fair share in Weverville. So what are you gonna do about that when everybody else comes up here and they want their $8 million library? And by the way, that tree you're trying to save or something? Every tree has a lifespan determined by the amount of leaf area and the amount of carbon that it can fix. And I don't care what you do to it, when it reaches that natural limit of the carbon that it can fix, it dies. So if you want more details on that, let me know.
All right, thank you so much. Anyone else? Mr. Rice? And we'll take Mr. Rice, and then you can go next, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. I, I think, you know, I've been around education myself for 37 years, helping kids, especially those special kids that can't help themselves. Who accesses a library? It sure ain't the ones that I'm talking about. It's people with influence, people with money, and people with expertise in other areas that may be the influential side. So I'm with Don. Politics and votes. This time of the year, you see a lot of things going on. But does it pay its way, these libraries? Do they pay their way? Or is it like public transportation? You wire your buses out and nobody's paying. The one thing that I'd like for you to focus on is ask some serious questions about what the benefit of these libraries really are. You've got one in every school district. No, you got more than that. Look at the libraries in our schools, plus these outside the school system. They've been a debate for years about the school opening the doors for public use of their libraries too. We're duplicating so much. On the other hand, let's think about the electronic age today and what the real use of books really are, if any. Who's got a set encyclopedia's at home today? That would be a laugh. You take one little app and you've got the encyclopedias on your phone, you've got the whole content. This is the world that we live in today, and this is the world that kids live in today. I've got a great grandson that's a reading, and he ain't but about three years old now, almost, and he's reading, but it ain't at the library. It's because his parents took him in the living room and sat him down, or the bedroom, and sat him down or laid him down, read to him, and he loves books better than anything they are. But they didn't go to the library to get these books, they ordered them across the internet, or I provide them some. We need to think about the real issue here. Spending money is okay if it's necessary, but I'm with Don. We need to find out if it's really necessary, not just for the elite.
All right, great, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name's Carl Catterjohn, I live in Haw Creek. I'd like to thank everyone very much for shepherding this through. This, sometimes I think East Asheville is like the lost colony of Roanoke. We're out there and no one knows what's going on, but I tell you, to, I'm at the age where, you know, you're starting to look at your bucket list, and I just bought a new car, it's got all the, all the add-ons on it, because for once, I can get all the add-ons on it. And so when you all started talking about the different parts of the budget, it was looking, I was looking like I was getting body side moldings, because I paid, you know, a large amount for the car, but now we're having a discussion over a $250 add-in if you're looking at it as a percentage of the cost. So thank you for considering the whole project as it's being presented. I think this is gonna be a tremendous add-on, it's great for the kids, and I've been in education all my life, and believe me, the kids don't just go there for the books. They go there for the teaching, for the interaction with the other kids, they go there for the interaction with concerned adults, and they can be disabled, they can be any color you want to be, you can be any gender you want to be, but you go there and you see them, and they're using these facilities. And thank you very much for supporting this, and I hope we get it, and I sure like seeing you do it. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am.
I wasn't planning on doing, my name's Kathy Bussie, and I live in Haw Creek. So I live only like maybe two and a half miles from the library. I can't remember how old I was, but I can remember going to the library with my father in the little town that we lived in, and I was no older than seven, because we moved from that town. I've gone and used a library ever since, whether I had money or I didn't have money. My granddaughters have used the East Asheville Library, and even though now they've moved to Kandler, we still get books for them there. I'm sorry, but this is access to reading for kids who don't have the money to buy those books, or parents who don't have that money. So I'm just thanking you, I've been to several of these meetings, not here, but at, in East Asheville. I'm very appreciative of this project. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we'll bring you back to the board, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Separate budget.
Okay. Okay, all right. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the budget amendment for the project?
I so moved, second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you all for coming out tonight and for, we look forward to working with you to see this project go up, so we'll see you out there. Okay, our last item on the agenda, and if the library folks are leaving, just please try to, we are, we have a little more business to attend to, so just try to keep it down on your way out. Our last item is the boards and commissions policy, and Lamar Joyner is gonna start us off on this item.
Oh, we got that. Yeah. Sorry about that, let me get prepared.
So with the help of staff attorney, Mike Frew, we have made some adjustments to the actual policy that were recommended by the board. He has also made some adjustments to kind of go along with statute and legal language as well. So I have provided each one of you with the actual physical copy of that as well, as I updated the version that was on the agenda webpage, so that is out there as well with the red line and all of the changes. So I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look at it further, but we'll just start with 3.0, where Mr. Frew has made some, just some minor clarifications of what was previously said as far as the citizens of Buncombe County, instead of just having citizens, and says that this policy does not apply to the appointment of any member of the Board of Commissioners as a member to any board committee or other authority. I think that was kind of something that was questioned earlier, and we wanted to clarify that, to make sure that was clear and understood. Do you want to add to that?
No, Lamar, that covers it.
Okay. Then there was some, just some typo errors or some capitalization in some points of this. 5.2, we included state law and local ordinance instead of appointment of statute of ordinance there. And so the next item would be 5.3. We had previously had, the exception to this was ex officio positions, and we decided to remove that. That was language that was also added in 3.0 that kind of clarified that. I don't want to read through all of this, because there's a couple, a few other changes, but does any commissioners have any questions, or?
Mr. Chairman and commissioners, pardon me. The only, I'll just point out that in 5.6, just added that language to clarify, that's just to be consistent with the new law that's coming. I know we've all heard about the new consolidation of planning statutes, planning zoning for cities and counties into a new chapter 160D. So rather than simply saying readily identifiable financial interest, the new statute indicates a close familial business and other associational relationship in addition to the readily identifiable financial interest, so just want to make that clear, that that just be consistent. So just want to make that clear, that that just be consistent.
The only question I have and concern is 9.2.2. New application is required for those seeking reappointment. I mean, it seems to me if they have, if they've not missed any meetings, if they've served well, we have, we have reappointed, based on recommendation from a lot of Boards and recommendation from this Board, we've reappointed. It seems to me asking them to come, asking them to redo an application, which we've already had information on, to me is not necessary, and is just not, simply not needed.
Can I speak to that?
You can.
In clarification to that, we've had instances where information was left off, like if they've moved from a different district, or address-wise, or how long they've served for certain particular areas. So I think in past instances, the Board has requested some of this information. So if we don't ask for a new application, sometimes this information is left off, or we don't have this information.
Well, and it does seem like, I mean, just to kind of confirm that the person still meets all the criteria, right, like where do you live, you know, things like that. You need to fill in updated, you know, an updated application, I mean, might have all been good four years ago, but maybe they live in Hendersonville now, and they may not know that that excludes them, but it's the way it seems like we kind of catch to make sure they still meet all of our criteria.
So what are the, what are the hot buttons, or I mean, if they've moved out of a district? I mean, is that all we're, is that all we're confirming? Because if they've done...
Out of the county is one thing. Sometimes, depending on the position, it can be a actual specific employer-related position for a Board. So some of, some of that information is pertinent to either a reappointment or just having clear information. Sometimes it's in changing an email address, and we may not have that updated email address in order to respond back to them.
Let me ask you a question to make sure. I see why we would get information updated, but now we aren't going to interview them again?
No.
Well, that's, that's at the discretion of the Board, isn't it?
Well, it is at the discretion of the Board, but typically, if they're applying for reappointment, the Board does have that decision if they want to do an interview process, but we haven't done that in the past.
Yeah, I mean, my, just, it's a good question. I mean, I think that as a routine matter, it would probably not be done, but I wouldn't want to, I certainly wouldn't want to tell a future Board, you can't do that. I mean, maybe there's some really pressing issue that, you know, like, it's like, hey, I'd like to know what this person thinks about this, as we think about who's going to serve in the next four years. So if someone showed up and, and contributed, and the default position is that they're probably going to be reappointed for a second term, but there could, there just could be cases every now and then where you want to, you want to interview someone, even if they've already served. That would be my thoughts.
We could possibly change it to say that if new information is needed for a new applicant, I mean, it's saying that a new application is required, but if you want to change any type of, it's up to the Board, but...
So I'd like for you to restate what you just said.
We could change it to say a new application is required if information is needed to seeking reappointment.
I would, I would...
I mean, it's up to the Board, I'm just trying to...
We should require people to provide an updated application. I mean, this is extremely, it's in the rules now. This is not a change, this is in the policy now.
We don't do it now.
Well, we should be, it's what the rules say.
We, we, we reappoint without an application?
Why should we not have people tell us where they live and who their employer is?
Oh yeah, I agree, because they couldn't move out of the county.
Not a heavy lift, right?
We typically don't...
Are we doing it now, though? Seriously, are we doing it now?
We, we do it on our end most of the time. It's typically not an issue with anybody that we're requesting this information from. We don't get any pushback from this.
So let me ask you something. Are you, are you physically, I mean, are you, it's not a big deal, hang on, hang on, I know it's late. You're asking, you're, you're asking, you're asking the questions if they have additional, if there's, if there's changes. You're doing that, that now. They're not submitting a full application to you now, is my guess.
We have adjusted that, where we are asking for a full application now.
You are?
We are.
Okay, very cool. Okay.
I had a question about the language of 5.6. It may be that it, we've just been at it for a while today, but I'm, I keep rereading the first sentence, and it feels like it maybe could be simplified a little bit. So I think it's, it's saying you won't be considered if you have a close familial business or other associational relationship with an immediate family member employed by the Board Committee or Authority. And it feels a little redundant there, unless I'm kind of cross-eyed. Is it trying to say...
You're entering into my world, but that's okay.
But is it, it's saying if you have a familial relationship with an immediate family member employed by the Board, or a business relationship with an immediate family member employed by the Board, or a associational relationship with a family member, that doesn't make... Can someone translate for me what that means?
I did pull that out of 160D, which becomes effective in January of 2021. I'm not sure where you're going, but if you're, of a close familial business or associational relationship with an immediate family member of, employed by such...
So what, no, maybe you can...
Well, this is kind of like the repetition of the familial and the family. It seems like it might, but I know what it means, so...
Is it saying, but I think it's important, because it's not, I think we need to zero in a bit, because it's, it's not clarifying where the conflict would arise if it's a financial conflict of interest. Like if, the way it's written right now, it all points towards if you have a family member, rather than like if you yourself have a financial...
So I, I think, let me chime in with a suggestion. I think that if you were going to, I think the underlined red section, the new language, is good, but then the immediately, the language right after that where it says an immediate family member employed, it seems like maybe striking that and just saying a person employed, right? So it'd say a close familial business or other associational relationship with a person employed by such Board.
That captures it, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that captures, yeah.
So if we could, if we could, whenever we make them, whoever someone makes a motion, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion, we approve this, and that we change 5.6 to strike the words "an immediate family member" and replace that with "a person."
Sure.
Yeah, I think, I think, Michael, does that...
Are you sure about that, Michael?
With "a person employed by such Board Committee or Authority," period.
Oh, I see, okay, and the second part of, yeah.
Okay. All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Can we just pause for one second? Sorry. The reason I'm dwelling on this is because this is the conflict language, and I just wanted to really make sure we get it. And I know this is, we're deep in the rabbit hole, but I just want to stay here for one more second. So this, what we've just discussed would cover the relational part of this, but it doesn't cover the scenario in which business comes before the Board that would, let's say I own business X, I'm serving on Committee Y, and some business comes before that Board that could impact my, that I could financially gain from. That might just be covered by someone waiving a conflict of interest moving forward, is that...
You know, when I, when I was reading the, the new statute and looking at this, I was thinking that we'd never be able to anticipate all such conflicts of interest, but the general conflicts of interest policies and laws currently in place would have to take care of that.
Okay, great, and that's sort of just implicit in this piece?
That's existing state law.
Great, okay. Thank you all for indulging me. These issues have been coming up on some of the committees, so I appreciate taking a little extra time with them.
I have a question as well. Would this consider somebody that was a family member of someone that was on staff of a department?
That's not what reads.
I'm just asking because I had question about that from the earlier Greenway Board consideration. There's somebody that is on staff that has a family member that applied for the position, and we just want to get clarification of that.
You're going to get a lot of referrals from, through families, I mean, through people that work for the county, so...
Yeah, I don't have a problem, I just wanted, I just wanted to clear that up, because I did have question from that, from...
So when we were doing research, one of the things that we saw in other jurisdictions was, let's say the department head or an assistant department head for a department, and then that Board is making decisions that impact that immediate family member that was employed by the county, let's say. So that was one of the things that we were trying to also avoid in this statute. So let's say, we're talking about recreation, it could be that, that one of Josh's, one, his family member is now on that recreation Board, and they're trying to direct his work. That would be put in some conflict there. So that's one of the things we were trying to avoid. Instead of appointing people that we know, creating, for the staff member to have their boss being that person, there's some inherent conflict there.
All right. Any other thoughts or questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Mr. Joyner, and a thank you to everyone who helped work on updating the policy. We don't have any other Board appointments for this meeting. It's time for public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to the Board? Mr. Yelton, we'll start with you, and you'll have three minutes to address the Board. We'll get, please hear your name and where you live, you'll get an orange light with 30 seconds left, and then a red light when your time's up. And when your time's up, we ask that you please discontinue your public comment at the time, because we want to give everyone the same amount of time.
Don Yelton, Jupiter, North Carolina. Thank you, Avril, for talking about the appearance of conflict of interest, and I think if the statute reads correctly, the appearance is also as important as actuality. The other thing I wanted to bring up is, folks, please talk into your mics. They are now directional mics, and if you're not talking straight into them, you don't hear what you're saying. And you people come up here to make presentations, if they don't have a booming voice, if they don't talk into the mic and look away while they're reading, you don't hear it either. Number two, overheads. Somebody needs to give an instruction in how to make overheads, because if you're sitting out here in the audience, you can't read those overheads when they got 25,000 words on them. You can't see it. Anybody knows when you do an overhead, you don't put any more than three or four items, and you do the outline, and then you talk from what's up there, so that the citizens can understand. And you got to realize, this thing's going out on TV. People sitting at home, all they get to see is you. They can't see what's up there. Now, let's talk about libraries. I want my information. I'll mention CTS. None of you on this Board knows how many times I talked to Tom Sobel and the Board about CTS and the problems they were going to have. And by the way, they've just scratched, scratched the surface on who got rewards. So you spend a lot of time talking about Boards tonight. It is my understanding from my reading, when you form a Board, that Board is an extension of you. And that Board has to keep notes, records, has to have a quorum, and act like it's part of this Board. And it has to have public comment. Now, your attorney can bring you up to date on all those details, but the last time, many, many years ago, I walked into the office in the old courthouse and said, let me see the minutes of the meetings, and guess what, folks? There weren't any. So I just want to caution you about that, and I expect, Mike, I expect an answer from you on what's legally required, please, sir. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Yelton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of Board. Have you ever heard the term "figures don't lie, but liars figure"? That's one of my famous words that I said to the County Commission Board that got me thrown out of the meeting by Mr. Gant, and you guess who said, "Take your camera with you"? That was Mr. Bill Stanley. I'm thankful that you took his name off of the building, whether you wanted to or not. I'm thankful for that. I want you to think about corruption. When you think about corruption, you think about me and Don Yelton. Not that we're corrupt, but that we bring things to you that sound a little off of the chart, but if you'd investigate some of the stuff that we talk about, rather than sitting there with a snobby face and a puckered jaw, and listen to what we got to say, you might get something. Did you understand that federal audits and corruption comes from little things? Not big things, they turn into big things, but little things. So we get this big old newspaper today talking about Mr. Brownie Newman, you know, about him putting this thing out here that he thought the probe, you know. Now, listen, this could be any one of you members, but Brownie's name's on the front page today. What I want to point out to you, I want you to think about all these policies and changes you just went and made through several Boards here after this corruption come out. What I'd like to say to you Commissioners, I'd like to see Commissioners with a forethought of making policies that you don't have to go back and change stuff, you make stuff that's going to stick in the beginning and find where the corruption is. Not after the fact, you can always brag about the horse after it leaves the barn, and what a nice horse it was, or a bad one. So we need to be having Commissioners that are looking after the taxpayers' money. It's time to hang your head now. I hope you hang in your head in prayer and not talking about me. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rice. Okay, anyone else? Okay, we have a couple of announcements, and...
Commissioner, can I make a statement real quickly?
Yes, sure.
To Mr. Yelton's comments about libraries, staff has worked on that data that he's asked, and we're actually testing it, and it will be live on our website for anyone that wants to see about where the money's been, what books and all that details he's asking about on the library's website. It should be live by the first of the year.
Cool, thank you very much. You need to know about the electronic, what that costs. That should be hard to find.
The electronic what?
The electronic books.
Oh, the electronic books.
We pay so much for every book that comes out of raw. And, 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 that was one of the, that's why I said what I said in my comment today. It's hard to get you, okay?
Okay.
Get any of that, whatever, what's going on.
Okay, all right, thank you, Ms. Pender.
Thank you.
On January 7th, at 3:00 PM, the County Commissioners will have their pre-meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326. And on January 7th, that same day, at 5:00 PM, the County Commissioners will hold their next regular meeting here at 200 College Street, Room 326. We are adjourned.
You have a closed session.
Oh, we have another closed session.
You do.
Okay, great, what's that about?
Okay. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3, to consult with an attorney retained by the Board, by the public body, in order to preserve attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body. And the case site for that is the National Prescription Opioid Litigation, the Northern District of Ohio, 17 MD 2804. Additionally, you have a, a matter pursuant to 143-318.11A4, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body.
Do we anticipate any action will be taken following the closed session?
Just direction, no action.
In the meeting, no action taken following? Okay.
No action.
Is there a motion to go into closed session?
That's second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? When we re-adjourn, we don't expect to take any action.